Call this first meeting in February to order, first order of business as always. It's the twenty.
I pledge and certify of the United States of America and to their public, for which they stand. I am nation under God, in the reasonable liberty and justice of all.
We have two minutes to approve. The first would be a regular session on January the seventeenth, twenty twenty.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Vote.
Yes.
Second would be the special session minutes for January the sixth, twenty twenty.
I will also make that motion.
Second. Vote.
Yes.
Yes. Public comment period. Anything from Brookside?
No, our next meeting is actually tomorrow night and Charlie should know that we're actually doing this one at Seabald's house. So I think.
I'll make sure.
Yeah, he can just pop in and then we're just doing a planning meeting.
Worthen Hills. Their meeting is next Tuesday because of Valentine's Day. And they'll be going over the end of budget in which they approved in January and in the time. So I'll know a little bit more. No, no response or anything.
That's kind of a little low. Uh, where are we with the sign?
The signs are all replaced. I haven't heard any point of the rest of turning dedicating the roads to.
Sheriff's Office. As usual, not a lesser resort. Just to kind of let you know that the sheriff's office did receive our, the two new DMT, toxin or DMT repelling machine. So one will be in our D A C, both the truck and then it will be on the west side of West Street. Our substation on Mitchell Street. You guys ever need anything? Probably about seven guy in control of the issue. So I actually have good refresh on the call set. Going on the sheriff's office.
Here we go. Guest speaker tonight, Mr. Hyder from Morpsy.
Thank you. Perfect. Should I get a clicker?
You know, I'm sorry. I don't have.
No, that's totally fine. That's totally fine. I'll just change as as necessary, but uh, thanks. Thanks again for having me. We are working on our twenty twenty four, twenty fifty Metropolitan Transportation Plan. And we're going up to as many of the members as we can to give presentations and updates on what we're kind of working on. Okay, so just a refresher is who we are. We're the Mid Ohio Regional Planning Commission. We are the Regional Council for the region for the fifteen county region. We're also the N P O, which is what our function is with the Metropolitan Transportation Plan for Delaware Franklin's parts of Fairfield, Union Counties. We have eighty five members that are local governments of all different sizes and types. We work on transportation infrastructure funding. We work on development support, planning, data mapping, things like that. And we're also a big partner with businesses and nonprofits in the region. And so one of the functions of the M T P is that we put out a population projection for the entire N P O region. You can see here on this chart, back in nineteen eighty, we're at one point five million for the region. Now we're at around two point five. We expect that to go out to three point one million by twenty fifty. So. And so this growth isn't just in population. It's also in households and labor force. We expect two hundred seventy two thousand more households and three hundred fifty seven thousand more jobs by twenty fifty. So we're planning for a region that's going to be growing. And so what the M T P or Metropolitan Transportation Plan is, is our long range planning document that looks at strategies and projects over the next twenty plus years that the region finds a priority. It's a long range plan that is physically constrained. So it's constrained based on the expected funding we will get in the region by twenty fifty. And it's a formal document that the N P O submits to ODOT and U S D O T every four years. And so it's important because as I showed before, we're growing as a region. The demands for the transportation system are changing. One key point is that a project needs to be on the M T P in order to be eligible for federal funding. So that's kind of the role of picking out the projects and priorities for the region. And so earlier this, or early later, late last year, we adopted six goals for the M T P. They had to do with creating sustainable neighborhoods, increasing regional collaboration, economic opportunity, the health, safety, welfare of all people, natural resources and reduction in per capita energies. And so this is part of our public participation for the plan, but there's a lot of different inputs. We look at the goals, objectives and targets. We look at state and local plans. We look at the data that we collect for the region. And then we take that and apply it and basically look at the priorities for the region and determine which product should be included and which strategy should be included. So for for this iteration of the plan, our strategies deal with two different categories, system management and system development. We have preservation and maintenance strategies, technology and I T S strategies, demand management, safety and security. And then the system development strategies tend to be project based. So biking pedestrian projects, transit projects, freight roadways, things like that. And so we just now released our list of draft projects. The map on the right, obviously it's very difficult to see in this format, but it'll be available on our website. Overall, by twenty fifty, we expect thirty five billion dollars in transportation funding from all the different sources that we get transportation funding. And you can see on that chart there the kind of breakdown by product type for the region. For transit, there's twelve billion, biking pedestrian, one point eight billion. Thank you so much. Getting over. So bike and pedestrian to one point eight billion. We also have freeway projects that involve adding capacity to freeways, major widening, new roadways. And then management operations with that large blue section is taking care of the infrastructure that we already have as well as putting out technology to address management and operations. And so earlier this year with the Linkus Partners, we adopted the planned draft transit projects, which are three quarters. You might have heard of the Northwest Corridor, West Broad and East Main. Sorry. And these are a number of other quarters that the region is studying for transit projects. That is incorporated in that twelve billion number from that previous slide as well as in the north along two seventy. That is an ODOT study for transit to the Intel site from the North Green suburban communities. And so zeroing in on Perry Township, this is a map that just shows the projects that we're expecting to include in the M T P. You can see here, the purple color is the unincorporated Perry Township area. There's a number of different project types on the right. And again, this will be available on our website as an interactive map where we'll be soliciting comments, but some of the highlights, I guess, are there's a proposed bike and pedestrian project along one sixty one from Sawmill Road over to Olentanki River Road. We have the greenway trail along U S thirty three that's planned. We have lane management along three fifteen and a number of other major projects in in the area that might be interest. So again, this will be available on our website.
Is that green one that's kind of sneaky look of is that is that at the bottom Worthen Hills that goes in the high banks?
Yeah, this one.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, that is a proposed bike path connecting there to the existing path that has north and south there. So again, we're taking public comment on these and we're going to have an open house coming up where we're going to be soliciting input on which one should be included. If we're missing anything, if there's something that isn't a priority anymore for the area, that's the kind of feedback we'll be looking for. And so a little bit about our schedule, we started this process in twenty twenty two. We adopted the goals, objectives, performance measures. We compiled the candidate and direct projects and strategies this year, put those off for public comments. And now into the rest of the year, we're going to draft the full documents by May and ultimately be put that up for adoption by our commission in the main meeting. And so this is just a slide to kind of highlight the work that Morpsy and the region is doing on Linkus, the initiative for an increase in the code of transit, sales tax. Basically, the project will be looking at making faster, safer, but more reliable public transportation, extended bike and pedestrian paths and making communities more walkable to get to those transit stops. And this is incorporated into the M T P. The projects that are identified in Linkus are also listed in the M T P. And so we have been going around to all the communities that are members. We have fifty four presentations scheduled. Those are going to last through March. Our public comment period will be open through March, so we'll be happy to take any comments from public or members. On March nineteenth, at our office is just up in downtown Columbus, we will have an open house for the public and anyone who wants to attend that to kind of give their feedback on the document. And then ultimately we'll be bringing that for adoption in May of twenty twenty four. That's my contact information, Jonathan Hyder, but my colleagues as well are happy to answer any questions you all have. I'm happy to answer any that you have right now or just let you kind of sit with that and then in through public. So. But that that's concludes my presentation.
Is that, what was that seventeen billion dollars or the next like, you know, almost thirty years?
Thirty five billion dollars until twenty fifty.
Is that in today's dollars or is that projected out?
That is, it's, the dollars are for the year that they're encumbered. So we have portions of that that are in current dollars. And then we have others that are inflated out to twenty fifty. So it depends on when those funds get to the region.
I said, as I know from the economists today, ironically, all the projects will project out over the next thirty years and things will be triple.
Yes.
It'll be triple in cost based upon prior three years to the next three years. So.
Yeah, and that's, that's a really good point because the products that we include in the plan, they vary in cost depending on when they're planned to be implemented. So we have categories for projects that are going to be implemented the next three years. Then we have projects that'll be done by twenty thirty, by twenty forty and then twenty fifty. So depending on where it falls in that range, you're going to have more or less inflation impact.
Can I ask you a simple question? Why do you call it Columbus Metropolitan Transportation Plan?
Because the federal requirements are for urbanized areas to have a metropolitan planning organization. And we're for, we're the planning organization for the Columbus Metropolitan area. So that includes all of Franklin County, all of Delaware County, some of Union County and then some of Fairfield County. And then Morpsy as a whole, we don't just, we don't just represent the metropolitan area. We also represent the fifteen county region outside of that. So.
Does that thirty five billion dollars, as I take into account the proposed tax like that being proposed because of the P S I project?
Yes. So that thirty five billion is assuming that goes into effect and then also the federal programs like the bipartisan infrastructure law and a couple other programs. Basically, yeah, so basically all transportation funding that the region can expect by twenty fifty.
And when does that proposed tax increase?
That is on the ballot in November of this year.
I'm good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Zoning. Speaking of maps and everything.
The zoning department's going to spend thirty five billion for the next two weeks.
No, not police.
I'm at thirty. Yeah. Um, old business, Henderson Development, I have not heard from the developer nor have I heard from city of Columbus. Did you get the chance?
I sent a text to the director today to both her personal as well as her work. So I have not heard back.
Okay.
All I'm looking for is a.
But we got the, I mean, we got a direction on that little piece that we were.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's next. Yeah.
I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah. So all we need is the document which says, here's the amendment to the water sewer contract for the cities in the county. It should be good to go.
So I'm not, I'm not a top priority for my connection with the city because she's not responding to me, but I know you reached out.
She didn't respond to me. So I'll call her tomorrow if she doesn't.
Well, I'll follow up as well. So we are still, per the developer, she's, she's looking for a March unit commission meeting for the public hearing for the final development plan. So that's still the plan as far as I know. Um, Brookside, yeah, Brookside, we had a teams meeting with Franklin County Planning last Wednesday. Beth and I and Pete Riggs and Joe Smiley and Kayla Johnson, who's taking Matt's place and her immediate supervisor, Matt was on our, anyway. So we, we had, we had a good teams meeting. Prior to that meeting, I had a discussion with, with the Peter Riggs and Joe Smiley that what if we just accepted split zoning and went ahead and accepted what the city wants as far as far as the lot split and I would just leave that little section as still zone exceptional use and not be zoned under the overlay district. Pete Riggs, Joe Smiley, we all thought that would work.
What the county want.
Well, the county would like that to be the case. So that's what we proposed at the meeting. And the county was happy with that. And I followed up with a letter explaining exactly what we agreed to, sent that to the county on Friday. Have not had a response from Kayla at the county as to that document yet, but in all likelihood, that's all we're going to need to do. The split will be done. The developer will then own the whole parcel and development can begin.
Well, we don't have to do anything. I mean, we don't have to go through the process.
We don't have to go through any process. So, so the letter that I sent to the city that they asked me to say is that three hundred square foot section would be undevelopable, underdevelopable under the Brookside overlay district and remain exceptional use. And at that, looking at that section, how it fits into lot one of the proposed development, all it is is a side yard. You know, it's just, it's out of bounds on that hole that I would hit to if I was planning. That's what I told.
That's far out.
It is that way. Yeah. So I expect an answer this week from the city that they, or from Franklin County that they accept our proposal. Well, new business, we have a attached garage on Pendennis Court and Treeview, probably all heard from neighbors. I know some of you, some of you have. So it's a very large addition going on on the largest lot in Worthen Hills. And the contractor and the homeowner and I worked for nine months to come up with a plan that would not require any variance because the homeowner was not excited about having to bring his neighbors in to tell them what he wanted to do. So we came up with a plan that modified what was going to be a pole barn into an attached garage spray mudroom, which becomes an addition, which as submitted fits all of our regulations. Well, the day they broke ground, the second day after they broke ground, they put in eighteen foot poles for a pole, pole barn type structure, which is, it's, it's pole framing. But all the neighbors thought it was a pole barn going in with, you know, everything that looks like a pole barn. So I met three different neighbors at three different times, met with the developer or contractor, met with the homeowner. Initially, the garage was put ten feet closer to the back lot than I agreed to. And so the homeowner agreed to move it and we moved it. And the homeowner also agreed to lower the walls. And so now I believe the neighbors are happy. I didn't get out there today, but I will get out there tomorrow. So the, it's been moved forward. It's within all of our regulations. And the homeowner did not have to, but did agree to lower the wall. So it's not such a massive structure.
That I am was building an outpost or something.
It was, it was a, it was a massive structure. That is the way it was looking. So I've met some neighbors through this process.
You earn, you earn more than you pay.
Good to meet neighbors. We have, we have a couple of dissatisfied, but resigned to the fact that it fits all of our subdivision standards and everything. So there were suggestions made that we change our zoning so that something like this doesn't happen again. And I told anyone who said that, please feel free to contact anybody if you suggest some changes, but. That's it.
Anything else under zoning? Did Brookside and Henderson? On the gentleman on the.
No, my to-do list. Road to Bryant.
Uh, the only thing I have tonight is I applied for the Ohio EPA's H two O chloride reduction grant. I requested from that pre-wetting systems to our, our trucks for the winter season. And then the annual M S four questionnaires have been turned into Brooklyn County.
Just sort of connected to road. I know there's some meetings coming up where I think kind of schedule about the sidewalk project and where that is in the plan.
Yes, I have a couple folks have already chosen dates. So there's another person that viewed for, right now from, I have heard back on from. So, but I'll, I'll reach out to them again.
Can you forward maybe invites? If I'm able to attend, I'd like to just to catch up.
Yeah, they're coming in at different times. So, oh, were you gonna?
Yeah.
There was a conflict for you.
Yeah, I have a conflict on the fourteen.
Fourteen. Okay. But yeah, I'll get you all the dates.
Two people in Brookside, right?
Right, right.
Water wash?
White, yes, water wash.
All right.
Yes.
Okay.
And then I don't recall. But they're, they're.
Separate.
Yeah. Yeah.
So if there's, I mean, if you could, wherever those end up landing, don't worry about my schedule, just wherever they end up landing, just send it to me and if I can join, I will.
Yeah, it's going to be, they wanted to meet here. Okay. So you know, but I, if you needed me to, I can set up a Zoom.
Okay.
Cool. See you in a while then.
Thank you.
You think soap blows off, it's winter's over.
Said that out loud. Are you new here?
Isn't this the brown chair?
Fire D M S.
Nothing at this time.
Police Department.
Nothing in our old business, under new business. We found out last week, the Ford, Ford Motor Company is opening order banks for twenty twenty five. We need to request a cruiser at this time. We're planning on doing one new cruiser next year and rolling one of our embarks as a fleet will buy used car. But the only thing I need tonight is approval for one car. The bank's open on February eighth and we need to have a purchase order in place so we can order the car. We have asked for a purchase order not to exceed seventy five thousand because I have no idea what the car is going to cost yet. And neither this Ford, Devon told us. So, but that, that should get us a cruiser, outfitting and so forth. The other thing we don't know is what equipment's going to roll over and what's going to change in twenty twenty five. So we don't know. We're going to have to buy all new equipment or if we can take some of our old equipment and rotate over it.
Um, yeah. I Google. They're not, they're not going to do a body style changes that on the expedition for like two or three million years.
There, well.
Really exploring.
There, there's going to be some interior changes. I don't think anything major, but we don't have.
Okay.
So that's our fear. In a perfect world, all of our equipment will roll right over. We don't have to worry about anything. So which is what we're hoping for.
This is one cruise. I mean, normally you would be.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're ordering one and doing a second, but that's.
Ian, are they, are they changing dump truck bodies a lot? Because. Not my police career.
A great business model if you can get it. You know what I mean? Just switch everything up and.
Start putting soap on foot bars.
Yeah.
Yeah, there you go.
That's a good idea. Four door truck doesn't sell that crazy anymore.
No, it's actually, well, you know, you can be like New York City, everything, every city vehicle has a plow on in New York City in winter time. It averaged, used to about fifteen years ago, was a million dollars per inch of clear snow in the city of New York. Sure.
I'll make a motion that we purchased one cruiser for twenty twenty five. It cost not to exceed seventy five thousand dollars. Uh, second vote. Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, Mr. Turner. I have to ask. Next, I just want to do an update. Thanks to Lieutenant Conkle. We started this year off receiving two grants for about forty thousand dollars. We've asked for a few more body cameras. We received a grant for three, three body cameras at no cost to us. And then we also submitted a grant for a new cruiser camera, radios, batteries, and some other things at a cost of thirty thousand dollars. And all that is covered up, no charge to us. So. So that's all I have.
Are we okay? We haven't sent out a question yet. I don't know, everybody.
Not that I'm aware of.
Not right. Yeah. I just, I kind of cleaned it up and put it in the format that Officer Delbert or Sergeant Delbert had been using. There's some coordination that needs to go on.
Is it finalized? So just from the draft?
I made a bunch of changes in yours.
And then she had one and that was just the two or three that you came up with and you saw that one.
Yeah.
Circulate that tomorrow. For final review? Yeah.
Oh, okay. Sure.
I haven't seen the latest draft, so I think, I think we all need to see it.
Yeah, I agree. That's fine. I'll go ahead and send it up to you. And then I put together that letter format just in case we decided to do anything with that. I don't know if you saw that.
I don't think I do.
Sent that separately right before, like a right forward communicator.
Um, anything else under the police department? Madam Administrator.
Um, let's see, nothing new on the year dot one sixty one quarter study. Do you have anything to discuss on the C I D chat?
No, I think the last thing was clarified, you signature we needed and maybe something need to be reported.
Okay.
Try to see if it's moving forward.
Yeah. Facilities, I'll let you know as soon as we get to the the budget and from Dublin Builders. Dublin D A C. Yeah, yeah, the D B S, sorry. Um, so I asked for Swayco to be put on here. The, we've been working with one of the gals over there and I met with her several weeks ago. Swayco has a consortium set up and she's actually kind of taking a look at what residents are thinking now with front fee to get some options. I did find out, we happen to have a meeting with a prior city manager from Dublin and Dublin, I guess, was the first one to participate in a consortium on this. And now that we don't need expecting to see some significant savings going with this consortium. I think Hillary just opted in. Worthington's part of it. So that could. I think Hillary just opted in, Worlington's part of it. So that could save some money for the residents on the trash piece to it. And then the other pieces that they have grant available for recycling trucks. So residents wouldn't have to pay that monthly fee for recycling. So our contract with Runkie is up this summer, so we're kind of trying to get started on it early and, and get some options. There is a timing piece to it with jumping from our current contract over to being part of the consortium, but Swayco will assist in helping with the bids to kind of fill that gap so that the township could eventually slide right into that lower-priced option. So I'll keep you up to date on that as we get some information on. Luke has requested to schedule the records commission meeting for March fourth, if that's okay with everybody, at sixty, or sixty? Six P M?
Okay, I'll handle that.
And that's just, you know, folks require to be here, of course, with Michelle and the chair. So they aren't sure, March fourth at six P M, and then we can jump into the review meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
That's true.
Okay, and the last thing is Otama has a cybersecurity side to it now. Someone, Jonathan, came out and met with me, Luke, Ahmad, and Lieutenant Conkle was part of that group in your drop, oh, drop, sync tool, you will find their recommendations. One was just to get a good policy in place for passwords. The other piece to it was the question came up, do all the elected officials use townships, computers for meetings and such? And of course, there's a couple folks who don't. So that's something we're gonna need to look at is folks who don't, who are using their own tablets or computers to get township
I didn't want to. If I get email from the township on this device, would have a personal device, I also get email on.
They're not concerned so much.
About email?
About the email now, because we're all. It's the, yeah, right. It's like your Word docs and this, that, and the other. So, and sync tool kind of ties into all of that. So. So we can discuss it. It doesn't have to be that.
We're kind of so severely locked down by.
I know. I mean, I don't like having two phones, but much less two tablets or two computers. So. But I just want to give you a heads up on that. We'll just what kind of options are out there for you. Okay, and that's all I have.
Do you have the extension to me? Physical officer.
Request a motion for approval of payroll and pensions.
Make that motion.
Second?
Vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Make that motion.
Okay, vote.
Yes.
Yes.